Testing, one, two, three, that's better, okay. I don't think I've ever seen a budget that is so consistent from year to year in terms of the numbers. There's very little variation in any of these departments or line items. And I'm just wondering if we do any kind of cost-saving program when we're doing the budget. Any business that I've ever been with has a cost-saving budget where the department managers are charged with looking at their budget and coming up with specific measurable areas where they will reduce, not might reduce, where they will reduce. They know best where the money goes. And this, this is an example to me of just year to year to year to year, doing the same thing over and over again. I don't know how many times I heard tonight, it's pretty much the same as last year. It's pretty much the same next year. It's pretty much the same five years out. That makes no sense to me.
Okay. The, the departments look at what their expenditures have been the prior years, prior couple of years. And if they feel, if they feel that there's a line item that they're over-budgeting, then they, they can decrease it. That would have to be a management decision from council. If you wanted to charge them with a specific percentage that you wanted them to decrease it. I mean, obviously, at any time, any year, council can do that. And they would go back in and they would have to look and see what items that they could decrease. But relatively, they try to keep it fairly flat. And that's just based on prior expenditures. Most, most of what you see, and that's why you hear them say it's pretty much the same. Most of what you see are normal operating things that they typically have to spend to, to do their operations, like for tuition, things like that. A lot of the departments, the department heads are certified and they must retain that certification. So they have to keep, continue to take those classes. The cost of those pretty much run the same. The IT, that's a flat figure. They really don't have any control over that. But yes, at any time, we can certainly charge them with trying to go in and reduce that. But that's something that would come from each individual committee. So like A and F would, would charge basically the departments that we just talked about. Public safety, you would do that within your committee. Same thing with the utilities and recreation and tourism with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. And like I said, this is, this is basically the, the first go-around conversations similar to that. Frank would be discussed as we go forward with that. That would be the normal process to, to challenge them. This is just the first. They're plugging it in, they're, they're asking for what they think they need. And then you can go back in and cut it. This isn't something where we're submitting it and saying, okay, this is the final one. We want you to adopt this. This is, they're giving it to you. You basically challenge question. See if there are areas that you can cut on that, okay?
Okay, thanks.
All right. Oops, that's why it's not going. Okay, this would be, we're going into the utility here with the utility for the collector. Debbie, I'll call you back up for that one now.
Okay, the first line item is state water tax. We do pay tax on the water that we use. That line item, again Frank, I'm sorry, that stays the same from here to here. It's dark over here, it's hard to see. The next line item is office supplies. And again, I reached out to my vendors. So my numbers for the water sewer bill, delinquent notices, shut-off notices are set. So that covers those and general office supplies. Postage, postage is a big number. I did walk over to the post office and ask them what they thought I should project for the next five years. And these numbers come from the post office. So I was able to bring that number down a little bit from 2020. Oh no, actually, I'm wrong, it went up. Certified mailings is what went up. There are certain ordinances that we have that mandate that mail is delivered certified. Software contracts, this is an area that we don't have control over. We have a lot of contracts. We have our meter reading software, which is Itron. We have the billing software, which is Edmunds. We have WIP, which is the online portal, portal on the borough website where you can pay your water bill online. We have Payargo. Payargo I spoke about in the spring. The eight fifty-eight that we spent in 2019 included a startup fee. So that figure is reduced in 2020 and going forward through the next four years. Going forward, forward, we pay a transaction fee. So that was able to reduce. Toshiba is our copier. Malwarebytes. The next, the next five line, line items are at it for 2020. Malware, malwarebytes and Neopost. Neopost is our folding machine and malwarebytes is our antivirus. I was carrying those two numbers totally under the tax side, not realizing that it's per computer. And that also utilities does contribute in using the folding machine. So I shared the costs between tax and utilities on those two line items. Again, the record retention, that's every other year according to our clerk. So we only have those increases in 2021 and 2023. Again, we've already spoken about the network administrator, Rich Graver, and the hosted exchange, the office, the cloud office three sixty-five. They were the new line items. So the budget did go up in 2020. However, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, I was able to lower that budget less than two percent. So in 2021, it's five hundred and seventy-five dollars, less than a two percent increase that were permitted. In 2022, it's nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, less than a two percent increase. In 2023, it's seven hundred and one dollars, less than a two, two percent increase. And in 2024, it's one thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars, less than a two percent increase. The last two line items, equipment purchases and tuition. I used to spend eight or nine hundred dollars a year on a maintenance contract for our folding machine. Not the folding machine, I'm sorry, our pressure seal machine. That's the, that's the machine that, that seals and folds your water bills. I spoke to many vendors and they said that it's really silly to pay that money every single year. So if you need service, just call for the service and you'll, what, I'll spend nine hundred dollars maybe once in five years instead of eight or nine hundred dollars every year. So I did save us there. And tuition, again, it's to increase our education. We like to take the courses that come by that aren't included in, in our league or, or our spring conference. They're informative and they're, and they're worth it. And that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Grant can talk about the regular operating under the utility, water and sewer.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I've never had to project out a five-year budget on, on my operating budget because of the fact that it depends on what happens year to year. Depends on what happens from day to day in public works and utilities. So I did look back to last year and the year before that and to see what transpired within the budgets. And I went from there. So I don't, I, I can't tell you that I did not stay within a, a two percent budget. A lot of, depends on, on what materials are needed and what are not. The new software that we have to, to pick up now. Deborah's budget is also within the, the utilities budget. So we have the postage, the dues and subscriptions for magazines and, and different affiliations that we're, we're involved in. Gasoline depends on, on how many times our guys have to come in for emergencies on the daily operations. Maintenance and service agreements, that's basically for any of the materials. Any of the machinery that we have that, or the vehicles that we have that, that have maintenance agreements on them to, to have the companies come in without charging us service fees. Generators are all the generators at the sewer and water plants for maintaining them, service contracts. Equipment purchases, that's for basic hand tools and, and materials that are needed for the job. That one is probably one of the, the few that have gone down a lot because of new equipment that has been brought in over the last year or so. As well as natural gas, I looked at the last two years of natural gas on, on the two, two different departments, sewer and water. And I pulled that money out and shifted it over to other areas. Radios, that's to replace the radios on a, on a yearly basis. The, the older radios come out, the newer, newer ones, if they break or they, they fall into, to the wells or whatnot or have situations, we need to purchase new ones. Licensing and permit fees, that's for DEP water licenses. And the, that type of services that we get from outside of the borough. I noticed that there was a, a decrease in, in the amount of licensing and permits that we needed. So I pulled some of the money out of there. Water and sewer electric, that is a big one. Depending on how much water we're drawing out of the wells. And I believe we may drop into the red for two thousand nineteen on that. So that's increased on a yearly basis. Same thing with the, the sewer electric to run the plants. Tuition, pretty much stayed the same with a, an increase every two years depending on our employment. We get new, new employees coming in, it's an average of twenty-one hundred dollars to send them to school to get them certified in, in treatment, collections. We, we have three new employees alone in the, in the water and sewer department. And they have to keep up their CEUs just like Deborah explained earlier. Every year, we have to have a certain amount of credits. And within a five-year period, we have to have thirty-two credits in each. It's not like having a college degree. They, they expect us to go back for refresher courses. So that needs to be updated. The group insurance, that's something that Jim takes care of and gives me the increases per year. I believe that's on a five percent increase per year. We don't have any control over that. Conference and travel expenses, that is for the EZPasses for the vehicles that still remain on EZPass. And for situations where you have to pay for parking, gasoline, if you go further than a tank of gas in order to pay for that. Chlorine, chlorine is to, to purify the, the water that we drink every day. I noticed a decrease in the, the amount of chlorine that we've been using. So that has been decreased by a couple thousand dollars. Sewer chemical additives, that goes into the, the wet wells in order to keep the smells down. We also have filters on the stacks that come out of the buildings that have to be replaced every year. I haven't seen any increases in costs on that, so it's going to stay the same. Pumps and motors, that's to maintain or repair any, any damages to the pumps and water and in sewer. The audits are controlled by, by Jim. So he basically said they were going to stay the same until two thousand twenty-two. So there's a slight increase there after twenty-two. Labor contracts, that's to pay for any situation that we may have with some of our employees. It does rise. Engineering fees, if, that's to help pay for Mark. If we have any situations where we, we need his advice or any kind of field work that he may have to do for us. Instrumentations are within the wells. Our computer systems that read the water usage, the, the, how much each of our pumps are running each day for maintenance and repair of those or replacement if needed. Computer supplies, I noticed that we had a decrease in use there. So that has been reduced by three grand and it will stay consistent throughout the next four years, five years, actually. Uniform contracts, that's not, that is controlled by whatever the company deems. They want to increase our, our costs. We have new employees. We have to, we have to pay for the, the startup of their uniform usage and cleaning and replacement. On the other uniform is for, to pay for their, their weather, their foul weather gear, their, their boots and shoes that they wear on a daily basis. Sweatshirts that we are required to, to supply them. Street openings, street opening permits have changed over the last year. We had a notice first quarter of this year from the county. If we were to open up Third Avenue, we have to now play, put up a bond of at least a thousand dollars every time we, we put up the bond and as that money is reduced, depending on the size of the hole, the length of the hole, the depth of the hole, they charge us for it. So we have the, that is an, an increase that I was not anticipating. So that, that's why that number is increased to five thousand dollars from three hundred and seventy, three thousand seven hundred dollars. We also had an increase this year on the We also had an increase this year on the markouts that we call in. It's free to the public to have those markouts done, but we are charged for that service. Where are we at? Water pipe and plumbing supplies. That is the cost for doing any kind of services, new services, old services, laterals, water main pipe, copper fittings. That seems to be consistent every year, the amount of use we have. Same thing with sewer. We don't use as much sewer replacement because a lot of that is done through our infrastructure program. So that stays consistent throughout. Building repairs, it's for minor repairs, just in case we have issues with windows, doors, paint, just to maintain the buildings. That is going to be consistent throughout the year. NJIT, that also stays consistent at the $25,000. Antifreeze. Antifreeze is a vegetable-based oil that we use to winterize our fire hydrants. The price on that has been consistent throughout the last couple of years. Gravel. Asphalt is what the Potuminas gravel line item is. That's going to stay consistent because those prices haven't changed at all. We do quite... Use quite a bit of it. Lumber and paint, same thing, that's for maintaining the buildings. Lab services fluctuates per... Each year. We have UCMRs, lead and copper testing. Depending on what DEP or the EPA requests us to do per year, that is what that line item is for. It fluctuates depending on what their concerns are for the flow from North Jersey to South Jersey, from Western New Jersey to Eastern New Jersey, depending on what may come up, depending on what legislation wants to do. Water tax, Deborah mentioned that earlier. That's consistent for the next five years. Equipment rentals, porta-pots. That number went up immensely for the charges that it costs us to rent porta-pots. We're actually in the red again this year for the amount that we rent for our special events. We have porta-pots at the ball field, the south end of town, the marina area. And each of those clean three times a week. So that's what that cost is for to maintain those. And then miscellaneous, just in case we have catastrophic situation where one of the line items are in the red for the year, we have money to draw from just in case, so we don't go over our budget. And at the bottom you see the totals. The increases are approximately or just below, actually, water and sewer is actually below the 2% increase that we are allotted per year.
The porta-potties?
Yes.
Which is not a subject that I like to discuss out loud. We're paying for them when there is a special event that is not ours?
No.
These are for our special events?
If it's a borough event, Fourth of July, the Arts and Crafts Show, any of the... Yes.
Okay.
We're paying for it.
Thank you.
What's the difference between the public water checks and state water checks? Whether each line's thirty-five... Or Debbie told us thirty-five hundred in her budget?
It's the same. It is the same. Yep. Deborah's budget is actually in my budget.
Yeah, her figures getting...
Her figures get shifted into...
Yeah, we're going to... This year we're going to try to pull out and show the administrative part separately where it's been kind of lumped into his budget. So you'll see the administrative, all the administrative fees, and then you'll see his actual operating strictly for... To run the departments in the utilities.
Deborah's budget is not the main budget? Just that portion or all of it?
All of it.
All of that incorporated in there, yes. So you'll see when we go in and actually do that, you'll see some of those line items kind of disappear under his categories.
And you'll see reductions.
Utility. Next is...
Just a general comment if I may.
Sure.
As Frank mentioned, I think it is customary typically to try and identify savings opportunities when you're putting together budgets. So I think that should be an initiative. Another common initiative is use zero-based budgets. I'm sure most of people are familiar with that, where you're basically, you're building your budget from the ground up rather than starting from what you spent previous years. So I would also encourage departments to consider maybe making a change as to how they look at actually formulating the budgets, starting from a zero base rather than from what had spent in previous years.
Basically what we do is I call it a modified zero base because we do start at zero. However, they have to use for the majority of their line items, the experience of what they've spent on those categories because those categories don't go away. I mean, there is some discretionary areas that you may have. The majority of them are standard, that they have to do those things to operate. So when they're submitting this, and that's why we've broken down so that you see what those categories are inside of it, they have to say what those figures are going to be. Like I said, this is just the first go-around where they're presenting it to you. The next council meeting we'll have the remainder of the departments. Once that's done, we're going to take the operating budget that they're requesting, we'll also start analyzing the revenue, projecting out what we believe we'll collect in the revenue, start comparing that, calculating out if we were to leave it just the way it is. And most times we don't leave it just the way it is. We would start calculating out what kind of impact in terms of the tax rate all those things would have. And then you would... You have to decide, okay, what can I live with? Do I want to see a tax decrease? Do I want to see my taxes stay the same? How much can I afford if we are going to increase it? And what things are reasonable to increase the tax rate for? Like specific things like beach and bay. We've already committed that we will have a tax increase dedicated to funding the beach and bay reserves. Once you decide if you want to keep your tax rate the same, keeping that part aside, and if we look at all of the expenditures when we add them together versus the revenue, and we need to go in and cut $100,000, $200,000, we will go back to each department and we will do exactly what Frank is saying. We will charge them with, listen, we need to cut this amount out of the budget. You need to tell us where reasonably we can do that. The difficulty with municipal budget is it has to be a balanced budget when you adopt it. They have to stay within the means of that. If there's an emergency that comes up, if you don't have... If it's not a life-threatening emergency type of thing, but a copier breaks down you didn't know about it, but you need that to function and you have to buy something. If your budget is so tight that there's no room, you potentially could overspend a line item. And in the state of New Jersey, if you actually do that, the amount of that over expenditure has to be raised in the next year's budget. So you're already starting the following year at a deficit which you don't want. And then also the CFO will get written up in the audit for allowing that to happen. So you have to be very careful making sure that you don't have your budget too, too tight. Whereas if you... A regular business, you have a little bit of flexibility there where you can say, all right, well, I can live with this. I'll take less of a profit this year because I think this is important. You don't have that liberty in municipal budget. So you have to be very careful with what you finally adopt. But you absolutely, we go through that process and we can cut budget if you have to. Okay. DPW. Start off with DPW, General Grant.
All right. The office supplies, it's basically for paper and copiers, printer, inks, toner, envelopes. I don't break down that exactly what we spend. I can do it for the year previously, but that takes a lot for us to do. I haven't been able to do that this year or any year previously for that. But I have... What I do is with everything, I go through the admins' reports on what we've spent in the previous year and in this fiscal year and anticipate what those increases are going to be through that. So, $100 in office supplies increased next year, anticipate it. Dues and subscription, they're pretty much going to go up $200 because this year we are almost maxed out on the $300 that we anticipated in order to pay for those certification renewals and associations that we are involved in. Cell phone costs. Internet is the next line item. From what I'm seeing in the budget, it's going to be going up for the next year and I think maybe in the red on that. Postage, we don't use a lot of postage in public works other than sending out our bills. If we have to send out notices, that's what that is there for. If we have an overage anticipated or not anticipated overage that we may have, that's there for Jim to use if necessary. Service contracts and maintenance agreements, right now it's at $2,000. And I don't get the agreements from the county or weather works until later in the season on what it's going to cost us for those two programs. The stoplights, that is Second Avenue stoplights that they take care of. They also do Third Avenue, 96th Street, 83rd Street, and 111th. For them to... And 99th Street, take care of those if we need... If necessary. And that's based on the county. I have no control over that. Equipment purchases, again, we purchased a few new pieces of equipment and I'm not anticipating needing as much money next year. So that has been reduced by $2,000. Computer supplies and whatnot, that's the malware and whatnot that is being broken out into the different departments. Tuition, that covers the CEUs for public works, the CPWM credits and training. Conference travel and expenses, again, EZPass, travel, lodging, parking, gasoline if necessary, that pays for that. We didn't spend as much in public works, but we did spend in water and sewer last year. So this number has come down from what I can see. We haven't been spending as much in that area, so I'd reduce that. We haven't been traveling as much. Beach maintenance, engineering, again, that's to subsidize any issues we may have on the beach that I need Mark and his firm to take care of. Street markings, that pays. And signs, that pays for the paint that we use to paint our curbing, our signage, replacement if they're damaged, poles that are knocked down, rotted out that need to be replaced. We've done a pretty decent job, I think, this year in replacing a lot of it with the new street signs that we have up. But again, it's come down $2,000 from this year from what I see we haven't spent as much. So I'm going to try to hold that line and maintain the line item as it is for the next couple of years. Gravel, Potuminas gravel, asphalt, DGA, dump fees, that all comes out of there. Again, that number's come down. We haven't had as many emergencies. We haven't had as much asphalt that we had at Leo on our own. And I think a lot of that has to do with the increase and the constant infrastructure maintenance and renewal that we do every year. We don't have as many emergencies. So I dropped that number down by a couple thousand dollars and hopefully to maintain that over the next five years. Salt. Salt takes care of any of the storms we have, winter storms. Again, I have a full bay of rock salt. We didn't use much of it last year, I'm hoping. And from what I can see in the projections through weather works and the projections that they send us, that number's come down by about $2,000. But I'm not anticipating it staying consistent, so I want to make sure we have enough money in the next couple of years after that, after 2020. So that number increases by 500 for the next four years after. Beach maintenance containers, that is to, as you can see, for dog waste bags and the bug-a-way bags that we use. The bug-a-way bags, spelt wrong. We use those because they... In all of our public cans, because of the sugars and whatnot that are dumped in those cans, we get yellow jackets and flies and whatnot. And they keep that, those pests, those insects out of those bags. So we don't have to have to deal with people getting stung. They seem to work out pretty well. But that price for plastic is not going down anytime soon. So you do see an increase for next year. We are actually, I think, $200 in the red for that for this year. Also the disposable bags, waste bags, we have increased the amount of dog waste disposable bag kiosses, as you might want to call them. We just put one at 104th Street and Third Avenue as request of the residents. Parking meters, there's another sewer subject. As you see, I have pulled money out of those other line items. And that deficit that I have right now with the kiosk machines is in that line item. It goes from $27,850 to $42,000. That's what I spend every year to maintain the kiosk machines. That is for our service contracts. In those service contracts, if anything breaks down in those machines, I don't have to pay for the physical piece that they have to pull out and put a new one in because that can become very expensive. That also covers our internet service, the M-Pay to park any of the... The internet service goes up to a collection agency and then they send the money to Jim. The internet service goes up to a collection agency and then they send the money to Jim. So there's a lot of factors that are involved in that. And that number, we are well in the red right now. So that money is to cover those services over the next couple of years. And it does increase yearly. I have no control over that. I don't get their anticipated costs for the next year until November. So I don't have exact costs for those right now. General maintenance and repairs, that's for, if we have sidewalk issues, concrete issues, we need to buy materials, cutting blades, small engine hand tools. That's what that number is there for. Again, with some of the materials that we have, the equipment we have, I was able to reduce that number to offset the cost of the parking meters. Uniform contract, I have no control over that. That's based on what the contract is year to year, as well as uniforms. As you can see, that's for their hats, their boots. Each year they get an allowance through their contract of $130 some dollars a year for boots. That covers that. The T-shirts that we buy every year for the summer seasonal employees comes out of that line item. Special events, flyers and advertisement, that's what the $200 there is for. Marina equipment and rentals. That's for maintaining the materials over at the marina. If I had to replace some of the caps or on the pilings or any small maintenance, that has to be done at the marina. Radios, I'm constantly buying radios, repairing radios, that's what that number is there for. Every full-time employee has a radio. And a lot of our seasonal employees have portable radios that they wear on them. Some of the trash guys that are out on the street so they communicate back to the office. That's what that is for. Dune grass, I reduced that number by $2,000 because we haven't been adding any new dune grass. We will be doing it this year when we have this program with DEP Coastal. So that money's there for that. I don't anticipate it costing $6,000. It also, we used to do an aerial flyover to fertilize the dunes to establish them, but we haven't been doing that. The anticipation is that the homeowners that are on the oceanfront would take the dune management and run with it. But we haven't seen much of that. And I don't want to fly, I don't want to do a flyover over the dunes that are being managed by these people and dropping double amounts of fertilizer. So I'm not anticipating doing that over the next couple of years unless we have a major storm like we possibly have at the end of this week that will take it out and we have to replace it. Then we wouldn't have to do a flyover on the new dune. Lumber and paint, that is mostly for maintaining our crossovers, maintaining some of the miscellaneous issues we may have on bulkheads along the beach ends, on the promenade, that would take care of that. If we have to build anything in the stockyard, that's what that fund is for. We haven't been using a lot of it because of the fact that we've been maintaining what we have very well. So that number has come down, but I don't anticipate it staying down. So it increases each year by a couple hundred dollars. Then again, bulkhead repairs. Every once in a while, we'll have a bulkhead on the base side that'll... From the heat, dry out, we have to nail it back down, replace the caps. That's what that money's there for. And that's consistent. We only spend about $1,000 a year on maintaining those. Licensing, that's for any of the new vehicles that come in, any of the boat that we just purchased for maintaining the marine areas, that pays for that. We do have a few new pieces of equipment coming in this year, but the fees are only $60 or so to put tags on a new vehicle. So I reduced that number down. We haven't been spending that much over the last couple of years. Bubbler system, that's for the system that we have when we take our docks out. We put in a bubbler system that keeps the ice off of the pilings in the marina area. And that's to replace any damaged or worn out equipment that needs to be replaced. Next item is the marina floats, that's for repairs of them. I do anticipate having to replace at least four of them this year at a cost of about $1,100 each for all the materials. They will be built in-house. Equipment repairs on the small engines, the beach rakes, the trailers that we use to pick up the trash on the beach, that's what that fund is for. I did drop that down a little bit. Like I said, looking at what we've done over the last year or so, I dropped that number by about $500. Vehicles repairs, this is the major bulk of the repairs that we do. We've been pretty good with our equipment. This year, we haven't had any major breakdowns. We still have to service every piece of equipment that we have, every truck in the fleet. That's what that fund is for. And we usually get pretty close to $25,000 a year, depending on if there's any major issues with the older trucks. And this year, we did pretty good. So I pulled a couple thousand dollars out of there, moved it around. Tires, another situation there. Tires, this tire line item is only for the small vehicles within the beach and streets department that takes care of that. It usually costs us about $1,500 to replace all four tires on a vehicle. Police vehicle maintenance, that is the number there for the police cars and all their equipment. Recreational, that's for the lifeguards and their equipment, the recreation department and their equipment and vehicles. And then the miscellaneous funds is just there to offset any overages.
I think next is buildings and grounds.
Okay, office supplies, it's pretty much the same for the next two years and then a slight increase at 2022. Dues and subscriptions, again, we spread it out between the different departments to pay those. Cell phones, pretty consistent throughout the years with cellphone costs in this department, Public Works, Buildings and Grounds. So that's, I'm anticipating that staying the same for the next couple of years. Maintenance service contracts, again, we haven't got the estimates on what the contracts are going to be for the next year. That includes, as you can see in the list, elevators, pest control, HVAC systems, boiler inspections and so on, copy machine, 96th Street clock and so on. So really, we'll know, it's pretty consistent each year in what they're going to charge us. But this number also covers the maintenance on those. If we have a breakdown on any of our generators that are within Public Works, not Water and Sewer, that covers those expenses. And that fluctuates from year to year. Sometimes we'll be fine, sometimes, like this HVAC system here. If you remember, this one up top here, every time it would go on, you'd hear this big thump. And then you would hear it run until it shut down. Well, that repair costs us quite a bit of money in order to do that. Computer systems, the increase there is the malware and the software and the Rich Graver. That's why that increases as much as it did. And we have quite a few computers down at Public Works for each of my office staff and a few of the automotive, Water and Sewer, and Buildings Department. They use those computers to go online to get quotes, to research. That's what that cost is for, that increase. Tuition, pretty much stays consistent throughout the year, the years when it comes to retraining Public Works. That's why the number hasn't changed. Again, conferences and travel expenses, pretty much it's consistent each year. Landscape supplies, that's an ever-growing issue, constantly. The materials are costing us more and more. And as you can see, the breakdown on those, what it's spent on is we control washstone, fertilizers and what mulch landscape supplies. It also incorporates any of the blades, the small engine equipment that they use. We whacker string, things like that. General maintenance and repairs, that's for maintaining our restrooms, cleaning these buildings, the multiple buildings that we have in town. We have separated that out from the regular maintenance of light bulbs and whatnot. Uniforms, this one doesn't have the contracts because we bulked it into Public Works. This is just for those employees in Public Works, Buildings and Grounds and their summer employees. And you can see the description of the boots and jackets, bibs, whatever else they need. Some of the PPE that they wear, chainsaw chaps and whatnot come out of that line item. First aid is just what it is, first aid, Band-Aids, alcohol, any kind of swabs that we need to replace and refill our first aid kits on our vehicles. Special events banners and flags, that line item is there to replace all the flags in town, the red, white and blues, and any damage that we may have during storms and all the tree lighting that we have in town that pays for that. Pretty much consistent each year, we spend about the same amount of money replacing bulbs and flags. Equipment repair, small engine repair, that's for pretty much the Buildings Department and their equipment. Their chop saws, their drills and whatnot that they have to maintain. Vehicle repairs, in their department, they pretty much have some of the smaller vehicles. So that number is there for, basically for their trailers and their minor repairs on some of their vehicles. Again, that number stays consistent throughout the five years. Goes up a little bit at 23, just in anticipating the cost. Buildings repairs, that's everything else. We had, one was for cleaning, this one is for any kind of lighting, any kind of doors that we have to maintain, any kind of breakage, ceiling tiles, that pays for that. And that number increases pretty much each year by a couple hundred dollars just to maintain and manage all the buildings that we have in town. Sprinkler purchases, that's, again, that is to maintain all the islands. Stays consistent about, we spend about the same amount of money each year. I'm anticipating the cost going up in about a year and a half from now. Some of the sprinkler heads and whatnot out there are getting old. We always have damage from freeze-up each year. And then miscellaneous, miscellaneous is just taking that little bit of that 2% that's available to us to, just in case we have overages.
Okay, we're going to end it here. We have a few more things under Grant that we'll bring that up at the next meeting only because we want to finish some of the other things that are on our workshop. But just to go back to what Reese and Frank are saying real quick. The next step for myself, the departments have submitted this. I have not gone in and done my review yet because I'll go in and I will look at what they're asking for. I will look and compare what they've spent the last few years and especially if they're asking for an increase. They would have to justify to me why they're asking for an increase if they haven't spent all of that money. So I may go in and make my own cuts. And then each committee will go in and get in more detail with them and make suggestions on those cuts. Okay? All right, with that, then we'll, regular meeting? Next year, Grant gets his own workshop. Okay, so we have, we're running out of time and we've got some time-sensitive matters that are special event applications that we need to get done. So we're going to jump ahead to that. Jenny?
Well, I have two special event applications. You can do them rather quickly, I think. The first one is the Wildwood Crest Board of Education. This is for the Crest Memorial School Boys Soccer Team. They are requesting the use of our soccer fields for five games during the fall season, starting September 24th. The price for that is $1,500 for the season. Their insurance has been provided. So that one, that's really, they'll just coordinate their game schedule with Tina at the rec department.
Is that something we, has to be done tonight or can we do it at the next meeting?
The next one, you can give the okay. And then the second one I have is, this is the Stone Harbor Chamber of Commerce Savor September Festival. Marnie Lengel from the Chamber of Commerce is here if you have any questions. She's here in the audience. This is the annual event and it's held by the Chamber of Commerce. The dates are Friday and Saturday, September 20th, 21st, held on the 200 block of 96th Street. They're requesting, you know, to close 96th Street to traffic and parking from 6:00 AM Friday to noon on Sunday. Also requested no parking at the Water Tower parking lot on Saturday for vendor parking. They have added an additional component to the event this year. Friday night, they're going to be hosting a dinner outside on 96th Street from 6:30 to 8:30. And it'll include a food truck and live music. Then Saturday's event will follow, featuring the Wine Beer Food Festival, which includes wine and beer tastings from local wineries, breweries, food vendors, live music. They have applied for the ABC permit for the event. They also have provided proof of their insurance. They will need support from our Public Works staff for some of the setup. Police department also to aid with the crowd control. So I don't know if you have any questions about that additional component.
Anybody have any questions on that? That's something that we will have to be proven at the next meeting.
Yeah, which literally is, you know, a couple of days before the event.
Yeah, yes. So if anybody's got any questions, okay.
Marnie's here, so if you have any questions.
If that's something we need to move, by motion, we can approve it at the council meeting, the next meeting if, okay.
I think that's okay.
So we can, we'll add that motion. Okay.
That is it.
Those two items, okay. We have run out of time as far as our reporting. And we did hear from all of the employees as far as their budgets, but not their monthly reports. So I think in the interest of time, and a lot of folks are here for the four-thirty council meeting, we'll move on and, unless the council wants to hear these reports and continue. What's your pleasure?
Move on.
Okay, move on. All right. Okay. So what we're going to do, we got any items for discussion? What we're going to do is we're going to adjourn, we're going to take two, three minutes, and we'll come back and we'll start the council meeting. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?